I recall the regular council meeting of spring's day, July 7th, 2021. For word is we will start to honor our country with the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, due to this law, with liberty and justice for all. First item on the agenda is Sheriff Gatt. Morning, Mark Gatt, County Sheriff. I'm coming before you today, I think this will be your fourth time speaking about it. I've brought Stan from One America before to talk to you also. As we all know, law enforcement is a difficult career and it's providing an opportunity, if this would pass, for the longer-serving deputies to retire a bit earlier than those who don't serve as long. Just recently, I lost an officer that was working for six and a half years and he decided law enforcement wasn't for him and he went to the civilian world to work. Also, I wanted to inform you that since we spoke before, that both Adams and DeKalb are finalizing approval for the same thing I'm requesting today. So I just wanted to tell you that because it shows that One America believes this will not affect the plan whatsoever. As you know, I'm fighting to recruit people to work both not only in jail but on the road. We have an opening now, what we used to get 60 to 100 apps for, we received eight this last time. So this might just be something more that helps entice somebody to come to Woodley County. Also, the last time we met showed to the numbers that it was going to be the county's additional cost of $9,075. That would also be with officers increasing their percentage from three to four percent. So what I'm coming today and ask for is the spur, special early retirement is what it's called, age 50 and 20 years of service, to have no sunset and paid out of the WOAT fund that I spoke to you about during the budget meeting. If you're still worried about a sunset, I would ask for the sunset date of December 31st, 2026, so we can have those years run on the plan and see if there hasn't been a big impact or there hasn't. I do not have any paperwork today because I was waiting to see how the vote was because just like anything else, when I request from One America to either do a study or write any type of paperwork, I get an invoice which is paid out of the plan. So depending on how the vote would go today, then I would come back with paperwork with the proper wording if anything passed. I guess any further questions?
Mark, you are referring to the Public Safety Act?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, for the sake of discussion, I would move that we pass the 2015 that approved by the Air Board and requested by the Sheriff. With no sunset.
With no sunset, that's. And the funds to come on the Public Safety Act?
Yes.
I have a motion. Right here, second.
Mr. Chairman, I would suggest that we, I'd like to make a motion this time we do not pass the. I think what we offer as far as a package with that for the Sheriff's Department is good. We don't need the extra strain on the general funds and I make a motion that we deny the pension. At this time, the Sheriff's Department.
Second, Karen.
Motion second, so now it's open for further discussion.
Are you, of all the proposals, or just the specific one?
Jason, can you remind us where you guys are at now? Do you have this bill spec in on what your pension is right now?
Right now, we've got 22% of 20. She has 65.
Chairman, I've spent some time looking at their total package, which I think is important, but to look at one item of a department's package you want, I think it's not totally correct. We have a strong insurance policy, we have a very, very strong vacation policy, holiday policy, and this plan has been in mind pretty well. When Mark came in, he actually gave a couple of plans from what he backed to do. The funds, the fund is not totally funded. And I disagree right now, but it's a pretty nice plan. Secondly, if I hate to see our experience and leadership leave us after 20 years, what I think, or I guess I look at, as any business, most of those people who worked in the administration and helped mentor other ones and make their staff stronger, we kind of seen that some that have left have went into other law enforcement. So it's not necessarily that they're getting out of law enforcement, but even though it's a tough occupation right now, due to the mindset of some citizens, I understand that, I have a son that's police officer. But the package as a whole, it's a pretty nice package.
I would probably add to that and say that most of what I'm seeing in law enforcement as far as going down their careers and then the city, coming to the county maybe, I mean, basically, everybody that's came the other way, not really, because there's an age issue. And with the county, this is a little, someone's got hurt for the department, whatever it is, fired, he else is competitive, so. Right, and the age difference as far as when someone can start with the Sheriff's Department is traditional, is it higher?
There is, there is.
I think what it boils down to, by my, is the fact that you see a lot more stress, mental health, everything else, just as long as, as you've seen in any other job occupation, it's a buildup over the 20 to 25 years, which obviously, you know, what happens. There's a lot of stress and I think the benefit of getting out early and maybe trying to enjoy life a bit sooner, this was a look at. I didn't think, as far as what I was told, as far as the impact of the budget and coming out of the WOAT funds would affect the general funding. I may be wrong on that, I'm not directly involved in this, this was Mark's, this is Mark's plan. So as far as Jim, we did have a couple plans that came, 5225 and 520 study, so there was a couple that were presented, so. I think it was just, it is just a factor, the matter of the stress of all the longevity officers that receive in the service world. Obviously, a lot of people in military service, even fired EMS, suicidal, it's scattered, it's not rocket. So I think the benefit, what the overall look was to get people out. And when you've got somebody that's been there 20 years, that person's committed. If you've got somebody that does 20 years, you really don't think they should be there, they're not fit for that job. If you've done something for five, six years, they shouldn't have been there. So these people with 15, 18 years are extended, I'm going to tell you.
I will say too, that Councilman Barrett asked me to voice for him today that he would, he would be in favor of the 5225. That's something that presentation was done that he shared with me, he couldn't be here, his wife had a stroke yesterday. He wouldn't read past that along, so I prayers with John Linda, as we're struggling through that. He didn't want me to share him with the unit, with the board and with the UAs today, that he would support 5225. We didn't know what specifically was going to be asked today. So I wouldn't, my opinion is I would consider this something that still maybe can't be worked through, but I don't think, obviously, the 520 is something that is going to be supported.
This, I'm hoping up to, Mr. Chair, I will be moving to against the motion that's on the table because I would like to go back to the rear board, the sheriff, or to the folks, as you're in the giving, Mr. Barrett.
So any further discussion? This time we'll go to the vote, as with other meetings that I have down here, it's difficult for me to see. So we will go to a vote by roll call, and I will have you administer that, please.
Okay. Councilman Mueller?
No. Well, I mean, yes. How, which way you, is it four or yes?
Four, for your motion.
Four, yes.
Yeah, okay. Comfort?
Yes.
Warner?
Yes.
Arthur Bright?
Yes.
And Western?
Yes.
And Sheriff Hodges?
I'm the guest. Next up on the agenda, Kim Hurt, please, please.
Good morning, Kimberly Williams, County Assistant. I handed Jenna some things yesterday, just nothing real formal, but just something to refer to as far as some of the abatements or a few of the abatements that we'll need to go over today and their complacency. One that was added that we, that was not on the agenda was ASW LLC. I did not find a CF1 for them that was presented for council's approval in all those, these CF1s that was approved by council. So I've added that for discussion today as well. First one I have on my list is Gator Cases, which I have brought to your attention. They are noncompliant with the assessor's office. They failed to file any business tangible personal property return within either deadline that we have. We mail 113 notices when we don't receive a filing by May 15th, which was May 17th this year, since 15th fell on us Saturday. And the due date from the 113 notices was June 17th and we didn't receive a filing from them by that deadline as well. I did receive an email yesterday from Drew Wong and they simply just failed to file. So they're not compliant with the assessor's office, nor do we have a filing from them.
Did they intend to file?
I believe that they did, yes, but that didn't happen.
So it still has not happened?
Correct.
And how long has it been that you had the conversation with them?
Yesterday, an email correspondence with Drew Wong from Gator Cases.
So did he indicate that he intended to file and then he?
He wanted to know what, they could file at this time, but they're beyond the time to file. We rolled and balanced values with the auditor for personal and real properties and we're beyond the time for the 21st, 22th tax year right now. We have to have those values to the auditor by July 1st, so we have to have a cutoff date. And that's the reason for those deadlines. The other two are just the issues on the CF1, their files and compliance with us as far as what they were required to file with our office. Couple products being the other one that did not have a CF1. I guess at this time, I don't know what you, what your plan is, what your thoughts are on the two that are, you didn't receive CF1s for. I mean, they're still required to file those with you within the statutory deadline as well.
Neil, is something you can speak on?
Yeah, I will say with a couple products, I sent them a letter, but you know, they are, they are probably not in compliance with the CF1 as far as employment and their ability to be purchased. Even if they did file on time, sure they're not compliant as far as what they committed to, to get the original. I will also say that a couple products was, give it the help of the redevelopment, let's give them some pretty favorable treatment just to help with the sale of buildings. So I'm fine with it, with me not approving that, not getting that. And I, I'm not sure I know.
I'm not real, I'm not familiar with them at all. I mean, they're also located in Indian County, but they're located within the same location of, out there were Gator Cases. I don't know exactly what they did.
And I will comment on the here cases, yeah, I sent a couple others, here, Paul. When we, when we came before you last week, I said we could do that. I didn't notice there was a system. I'll also say that Gator, I think that original payment was done as part of routine, so it's almost a different issue. So, you know, we did our part.
So to understand with Gator Cases, it's just automatic that there is no payment for this year that we expect.
Yeah, we don't, yeah, we do not even have a personal property return from them, for nothing.
Mr. Chairman, we have failed to investigate ASW, even though it's not part of his economic development. Fair enough, just for everybody's information.
So did I sign paperwork for any of those three? I didn't think so.
You have a CF1 for the Gator Cases, but that's all they turned in to council, the other two didn't submit CF1s.
Okay, so Jen, is this something that needs motion or needs an action by the council? Or is this essentially just a report to us from camp on what's going to happen if they're not being received there?
I think if you guys want to deny those statements, I think that would be proper. So because they're not in compliance, they didn't turn in there. Which we do have a CF1 from Gator Cases, but again, this was one that you didn't sign because it doesn't look like they're compliant. So we didn't catch that one. And again, they didn't, they didn't turn in your substantial personal property return.
Yeah, actually, all three are noncompliant with the assessor's office because of, even though they're required to file the CF1s with most of us, but the statutory deadlines don't apply to them filing those with you time, change that time.
So if we deny it this year, can they come and reply and get the payment next year?
Yeah, I mean, this is the yearly assessment.
Just every year, they just have to fill out these CF1s against you. These three have failed to do that, so we need to take action, go back.
It's the yearly assessment, they're required to file by the same deadline as every year.
Okay, and if I remember right, we denied a couple products last year. I don't think they expected us to deny that. As far as the other two, I think it was Neil referred to the fact that they're in year eight or nine of their, of a 10-year basement, so it's very, or a lot less known than it was in front of us. Correct. And you know, as opposed to Gator, just as you call, somebody may or may not, actually, we had it come in as part of council, just because where his point was, you know, he struggled a lot with COVID, the high schools. So I don't know why they would forget.
You know, last year, they filed, I want to say, after depreciation, their total asset value came to like 500,000. Then they abated 400 some of that, so they were still filing last year.
Oh, that was only first?
Yes, yes, not on the real, yeah. So I mean, they abated quite a bit and only had about 140,000 that they would have had tax liability on, so.
Thank you, Kim.
Yes, thank you.
I'll entertain a motion on these three tax payments.
I move that we deny the abatements for Gator Case, ASW, and the products.
I'll second the motion, second any further discussion. Hearing none, we'll go to roll call for vote, please.
Okay, Councilman Mueller?
Yes.
Congresswoman?
Yes.
Warner?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Amy Monarch, please.
Good morning, I'm Amy Monarch with the county commission. I'm here to request additional probation out of County General to cover for our field officer. When doing the budget for 2022, we realized that he has not been paid according to how his position has been factored in 2020 or 2021. So the difference to make out what he should have been paid in 2020 as well as in 2021 comes to $3,162. I'm requesting additional probation for that.
Can you give us a small bit of background on why he wasn't paid when he should have been paid?
Because he's, most of his salary is out of the DOC grant fund. I didn't even realize he was a factored position within the county, so I never even looked at that. And it was when we were doing the 2022 budget that I realized he was a factored position. And so that field officer position was factored for community corrections as well. And so they are basically the same position and he did not get paid what field officer with community corrections would pay.
So we didn't violate anything from the state level as far as them telling us what we need to pay people? Our factor came back at higher than what the state says, we just didn't.
No, this is not a position that's set by the state, this is a field officer, not probation officer.
So it's funded, but salary not established by the state?
Correct. And the DOC has not provided any, the grant hasn't provided any raises in the last three so years, so they would never have even funded all of this.
So they're still funding this salary?
Um, yes.
Based on old numbers and not how we had factored it out with a life position within the county?
Correct, the Department of Corrections has paid us for the last couple of years $42,072 for that position. They have listed, they haven't given any raises, so his increases have come out of County General. But I think I did have enough out of County General to cover what he should have been paid all along.
So the evaluation that we had done with Wes was for his position in particular, or was it for a life position? And how, how much were the differences responsibilities for those positions? Do you think they're the same job?
Basically, it would be rent travel position, the community corrections, he's doing the home visits for those on home detention as well as doing work release checks. They are basically considered the same position, that's how they back away, the company here is factored them.
And what are the main responsibilities for your officer?
For my officer, we have to make sure that we keep our provisions standard, which is so many home visits, so many drug tests for high and moderate risk felony offenders. So he's in the field making sure that every high risk felony offender has at least one monthly contact as well as one drug test, moderates are, you know, they're based on each level. So he, a 16 was to hire a moderate felony offender, probation officer to get, make sure all those checks are done, make sure they're compliant, not just in our office, but out in the field as well. He also works as a Juha officer and the other officers too.
Jen, if we would approve this retro pay, how would that affect what you need to do or what you can do as far as going back and paying the proper payroll taxes and so forth?
Okay, so I give you guys the salary ordinance amendment. So yeah, we would back pay him for 2020 because he should have been brought up to what the other field officers were for their 2020 salary, that's the $1,763, that's the difference that he was paid short. So we can pay that to him in a lump sum on the next payroll as long as you guys approve that back pay for 2020. And then for this year, we need the $3,549 out of County General and then obviously, the probation grant is the $4,072 that's already been approved through this year.
But how does that affect our audit from last year on payroll taxes, County General, everything else? Is that, what's the process there and you going back and refactoring that from the previous year?
Um, well, because Wes refactored the position, we just missed it. As long as we have the paperwork to show state where it's captured, they come in and audit, they can explain everything, which, you know, and you guys approving the salary ordinance amendment, they're gonna, I mean, when they come in and audit us, we give them the salary ordinance and all the amendments with it. They're gonna have to see that you guys approved this, I'll give them a minute, it'll show that you guys approved it and, I mean, they're not gonna question it, so that's normally how it, how it's supposed to work. I hope that's what you're asking.
Yeah.
Okay.
I wanted to make sure that it was, it was something you'd go back, I mean, obviously, you have, basically, you have to change.
Yeah, yeah.
To make sure you get that done from the previous year. Anybody else have any questions, Amy? So Amy, you got two getting paid the same amount, field officers?
No, the other field officer is with community corrections, this is our probation field officer.
I make a motion to your group to request for amendments to salary limits regarding probation pickups.
Are we on 20 and 21?
Yes.
I'll second. I have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll go to roll call for vote, please.
Mueller?
Yes.
Comfort?
Yes.
Warner?
Yes.
Arthur Bright?
Yes.
Western?
Yes.
And Hodges?
Yes. The next item on the agenda is 2022 budget changes and recommendations. I know we have specifically a couple people here to speak and then we have other things possibly. So let's start with Mark Stern, please.
Senator, what are the county amendments? I just wanted to give you an opportunity to clarify any questions or answer any questions or clarify anything on the 2022 project summary sheet for my 2022 budget requests. I did break that down by facility and what I'm determining to be the most urgent by my location there. Was there any questions concerning my summary sheet request?
Jen, you had a particular issue we didn't talk to me about, can you share that with the present council as far as why we thought it was important for the council to end that?
Um, that was, I think, I think that was Amy. I don't think, I don't know if there was any concern, the only thing that I remember with Mark was that, um, the museum, she had put, she had put her, what, she wanted to, I think, yeah, I think she spent $53,000 in her budget for the roof and painting and all that to redo some of the building. And then I think we had talked about maybe Mark putting it in his budget or in Kim's cap. But other than that, I don't remember.
The, yes, as far as the museum, I guess I was a little unclear as to my role and responsibility for the historical house, not the annexed building. And I did provide commissioners with the breakdown of what needs to happen to exterior the building. I apologize, I did. I apologize, I did not bring that sheet with me. It's pretty extensive.
What are you currently doing to maintenance on the buildings?
Again, I was a little unclear. My role, we've always been there to support her in whatever she needed, whether it's manpower or financial. Specifically for this year, she does have a roof leak. She didn't have the money in her budget. I told her go ahead and have it done. I would cover the cost of that. But the building, the house itself needs tremendous amount of exterior work. A couple hundred thousand dollars worth.
Didn't we learn that? I thought we talked about that when we was gonna take out Kim Kat.
I think it was $53,000. Yeah, I think it was $53,000. Yeah, $53,000.
That dollar amount was based on Rhino shielding, applying Rhino shield to the exterior of the building. Since she got that quote, we have gotten involved and looked, inspected the building over. It needs roughly $25,000 worth of wood replacement before we can apply the Rhino shield. So that would have to happen before that. So really the $53,000 that you were approving, is it gonna be enough to do the exterior?
Well, that's $75,000, how much is the rest? We're talking plus $200,000.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
If the amounts we're discussing is roughly $75,000, so where's the rest needed to make up for the $200,000 or helpings needed?
Uh, the shutters need to be replaced. There are foundation, masonry work that needs to be taken care of and the chimney, masonry restoration needs to be taken, taken care of.
And can that be done in stages or can it be done off at the same time?
The masonry repair and restoration can be done in stages. But as far as the Rhino shield, that really can't take place until we replace the rotten wood. And then that would include the shutters and storm windows.
So you're just thinking tuck point in or is it collapse?
Tuck point, yes. Few replacement, brick replacements, but primarily tuck point. This doesn't need necessarily 2022. We can stretch this out to 2023. We could use some of that money to take care of, like the masonry. There has been some vandalism there. So I had, I believe it was around $5,000 in there for surveillance equipment that we could monitor that facility.
Mark, I know there's been unclear as far as your involvement with the museum. It needs to sound like some structural type issues and you deal with that quite a bit with the courthouse and other old buildings. Is it going to be asking you to work with Danny to make sure that you provide your expertise and help her as far as with the scheduling of these, this upkeep and maybe setting up a program to make sure that we're watching for things like that? I mean, is this another building that you can take on as far as that responsibility?
Absolutely. You have to do that.
Listening to you, I kind of get the idea that that's what she wants. She wants that help.
I believe so, even though she hasn't specifically asked. And again, I didn't want to step on her toes, but I'm more than willing and happy to take care of and work with her on that.
Mark, is this something you had talked with commissioners about?
Yes.
What's your feeling?
They believe it needs to be under my observation and control.
Well, I think that would be a decision that needs to come from them as far as that direction. I'm just, I guess, that's not a decision where I'm making to ask you to do that, but that's something that I was just curious whether you're comfortable with it, because obviously you deal with that with our other building.
Yes.
So I think it makes sense.
So if you did were to approve the 53 for her, I would recommend we use it for trying to get as much of the exterior work done as we could. And then in 2023, I would be bringing you the remainder of the work that needed to be done, instead of asking for the full $200,000, so 2022.
Would the 53 do the roof?
The 53, I would say would do the, all the masonry repair, have the surveillance, and then look deeper into the roof as to what else could be done. Again, she has some immediate needs with that roof and I'm gonna take care of those this year. We're getting those done right now, so.
Does the whole thing need roof? You're just gonna?
No, sir. Repairs, certain areas.
You know, the next two years, does the whole roof need replaced?
I don't believe so.
It's a split roof, you're patchy, we're good there.
Yes.
Okay. And we've already approved that 53. So I guess I would ask council to entertain the idea of making a motion that we give the commissioners a favorable recommendation that they would have Mark take over the maintenance on that building, working with Danny. So I'll make that motion to commissioners. Have Mark take over that recommendation.
I'll second it.
Motion to second. Any further discussion on that?
I would propose that at this point, we will be audited, making sure the funds are taken out of the appropriate budget, whether they should be used for additional to Mark for them.
And that's something that can be done even after the budget's approved regardless of whether money's coming from, right? You can move that?
Yeah, but after speaking about Tiffany, I do think that Kim is right and we did, I think you guys did just like take out our Jim Cap and just pay building that's made improvement.
Any further discussion on that issue? Hearing none, we will go to roll call for vote, please. Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. You have any other? Nope, that's just what I was gonna ask you if you had any other issue you wanted that you needed to share with us as far as your budget. Any other questions that Mark focused budget since he was not here at our budget meeting?
Took that one, so the last couple of years, we've spent a lot of money on the courthouse. We still working on parts of that sidewalk or whatever. Well, let's talk about the envelope of the building first. As I said, in 2022, I requested to do the north side. That would be a total 100% granite, recockpointing, recock, everything on the north side. 2023, I would be asking for either the east or the west side. And then the following year, finish up the last side. And then we're gonna be good for about 20 years on tuck pointing and caulking and that type of stuff. Yes, there are some needs for the sidewalk. I would have it separated out and, yeah. Yeah, I think we did some caulking in the last couple of years. We did 100% on the south side last year. The year before that, we done 100% on one of the upper sections. The year before that, I think one of the other upper sections, we done 100%. I have, if I could, I have a map that shows everything we've done since I've been here. I'll be happy to forward that to you, share with you as to exactly what we've done to the courthouse in the last, at least 15 years. I've got that documented.
What I just heard you say was that you wanted to do the north side and then pick between the east and the west side for the next year and the other one the next year and then finish up with the south side.
So, no, the south side is done.
Okay. But I think I heard you wrong and I, because I thought you said that you would need to do the south side then.
But I, we did that last year, yeah, 100%. All right, that's my question on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else here to speak today on their budget? Any something that was added or left out? Yep, come on forward. And I did have you down. But I couldn't see you behind the podium, so I apologize. So I think now that's lost for you.
That's right. Anybody who's with the county emergency management, council coming for you. I thank you for hearing my budget remotely. I appreciate that. I had sustained an injury, so I appreciate your consideration of being able to look at my budget and approve that. The one item that you have questions about, which I'm here to answer today, involves a capital outlay request, which is for a vehicle purchase. I provided a letter to the auditor, which forwarded to you at this point. Currently have, excuse me, two vehicles, a 2019 Silverado, which was purchased a couple of years ago, and a 2008 Ford Explorer that has been a pass down vehicle from the sheriff's department through attrition down to emergency management. When we received that vehicle, it had seen some wire tear, to put it politely. And we've been chasing our tails, honestly, in repairs on an annual basis. Transmission a couple of times, some other issues with the steering controls. And so I'm coming before you today to look at replacement for a vehicle. I've received three votes from three vendors in the local area and the cost estimates range anywhere from $37,672 to $38,820. But those are for 2021 vehicles that they currently have in stock. As you can imagine, across the nation, there has been demand, supply and demand issues with components for vehicles. And I'm looking to lock in that pricing so that we don't see an extraordinary increase as what we've experienced with some of the building construction and wood products across the country as well. But it seems to be trending that that's what the automotive industry is speaking to now. So I'm coming for you to put that range, just to make sure nothing has been sold out. I have received these requests back in May, so I'd need to check current availability, secure pricing with approval, but not for delivery until 2022 when the budget goes into effect. And I'm happy to answer any questions. I detailed some components, the vehicle that I'm looking to replace, it's a little over 100,000 miles, 102,000 miles. Has some cosmetic damage that was just, as I said, passed on that was not significant enough to repair the body. But I'm more concerned about the mechanical maintenance of one jetty.
What type of vehicle are you looking at?
Looking to replace, I have the 2019 Silverado, so to complement that and provide equal, I'm looking at a SUV style vehicle to replace that. So a Tahoe, an Expedition or a Dodge.
Definitely have both trailers?
Yes, absolutely. And that's one other key component. Thanks for bringing that up, Councilman. The current trailer hitch is, I believe, hot and it's just not capable of pulling any of the trailers that we have to support public safety components. Thank you.
What did you guys pay for your last SUV vehicle? You know?
It was, that's not even apples to apples, you're at the end of this time, pull that to the border, have a big apple trailer. Especially a little down, maybe below 30 by the time you hit. But tops are always more, obviously, for a vehicle than you are in an expedition. Cars are also higher than trucks as well, as far as the price of your truck.
And all the pricing that we have received is government service approved contracts, GSA price.
Okay. So is that a, is that a half ton, three quarter ton vehicle that you're looking at?
Yes.
How much?
Yes.
Half ton?
Yes.
And that's, will you be able to haul what you need to haul?
I believe so.
You're, you're, go ahead.
If you're looking for a vehicle to tow your trailers, why are you looking to add to your truck? I'm looking to complement what I currently have. I have a 2019 Silverado. This vehicle would be, again, used for emergency response capabilities to be able to haul equipment, services, other things that responders would need on scene. Sometimes I go trailer haulers, you can go haul with the Silverado. It'd be either one. So if I'm on scene and I need additional equipment, I need a secondary trailer or I need a trailer to begin with because my response was immediate, I have another vehicle that's capable of pulling those trailers to that location. Oftentimes I respond in person immediately to determine the situation, the longevity of it, the needs that are gonna be necessary, and that I can call for additional assistance to bring other equipment out to the location.
Amy, is this, what, what, what are you driving?
2019 Silverado.
You're driving that?
Yeah, 2500 series, yes, sir.
Is that a standard 2500 or multi-passenger?
No, it's a, just a crew, it is a crew cab, but, or bonus cab, they call it, I think.
Are you keeping that truck?
Yes, sir.
I guess I'm a little confused why you're switching it for half ton when this is a three quarter ton, you've got that.
Well, just, well, I'm not switching it at all. I'm looking to replace the 2008 Ford Explorer that's not capable of pulling.
Correct.
Not looking to switch it. Looking to add to, replace a current vehicle that I have.
Janet, refresh my memories, is it just you or do you have part-time person?
We are actually actively interview or searching through and interviewing candidates for deputy director that is full time.
How soon do you think you'll get that?
I'm hoping within the next month or so. We've had issues being able to arrange interviews with some of the panel that conducts the meetings.
And you've already searched the pass down vehicle opportunities?
I haven't, honestly. In the past, it's been at least through communications that they wanna try to prevent from doing that so that we don't have this issue. Again, I put close to probably, I'd have to go back and look at my auditor reports, but easily over $6,000 in that vehicle since the time that I owned it in 2015. And that has all been maintenance or repairs that have been necessary as a result of the vehicle in the manner of.
I agree. Councilwoman Wheeler, I don't think half tons will be big enough. I'd feel a lot more comfortable to get another 25 every year. That, if I have a home, there's no question, you could hook up either hole of the trailer or the street or truck, go. Since my trailers, I have the same concern. I don't, I don't know if it's smart to have to buy a half ton truck, a half ton vehicle. My guess is that the tri weight on the trailers is fine with what you're working with. Maybe have to give us heavy. So I'd order budgets that are coming in, how to raise that or check on that.
I can, I can check on that.
I, I'd feel a lot more comfortable. Then we wouldn't have to worry about, you know, that might not quite be big enough. Kind of this way, we're sure it is, you get around it.
I'll get a vehicle that has to look out. Just make sure that it's, it's got tread of brakes and everything else already in it when you get it.
Absolutely, honor, and that it's still running as that.
So everything that you need that's in that vehicle that you need, then get a surprise.
Okay, absolutely. I can do that, sir. Can you do it with the lead line? For ordering this vehicle? If you place your order the year prior, typically you can take possession typically in the normal year, the first year, January, February, when if you're seeing your supplies, we would have one hired to be able to drive that vehicle. I'm sorry, I couldn't. So that would be the kind of guy that's one hired that's able to drive that vehicle? Correct, absolutely. Okay. I guess I'm hesitant on this because there's nobody to drive. Well, I'd like to fill that position as soon as I can.
Then you do have volunteers that when you have a crisis or emergency or a situation that are gonna be able to drive your vehicle?
Yes, sir.
To get the equipment to where you need to get the equipment to?
Yes, sir.
And I take, you'll be driving the new?
Actually, I might, the one I have. It serves to be very well, sir.
So by next month's meeting, you'll be able to do all this research?
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, I can communicate with them to just identify a different model vehicle to be able to.
And if the dealers do document, they're less expensive?
Sure, yeah, they typically provide the.
The documentation. Janet, what date do we have as far as finalizing our budget for the year?
Um, I have a meeting in August. I'm, well, I don't, if anybody has a calendar with them. Actually, we are. Oh, the, oh, the budget calendar, yes. When are they? I actually think August is the hearing and September we're about things.
Okay, so that'll give us time to revisit this on the third, August 3rd emergency.
And then if you just want me to leave, because I just have to advertise by next week, a week from today, I'm going to advertise. Would you just like me to leave at the $40,000? And then? And then we could do, if she had events that coming in higher, would you like me to up that? Do you think it's going to be more? We can always do an additional next year if you guys approve it and it ends up being more than the 40,000.
What's traditionally, what's a difference between a half and a three quarter ton? About $2,500? Anybody? So. Do you think it's higher than that?
I do. That just, I mean, looked acceptable.
So will the council be comfortable as far as having Jim advertise for us?
We always advertise moving where actually we can spend potentially, correct?
We always err on the side of that, yes. I'd be willing to say 60.
Got to go say 15, 16.
I'm checking.
You say 60, she's going to look for 60,000 dollars.
I mean, one is left for you.
We'll be on 15. You just got your back and sides in there. And your vehicle.
I appreciate that. I do believe, I, we have been very repetitive price before, and they have treated us very well for our firm and service contracts. So hopefully, we'll do, we'll be very fiscally responsible with that. And I'll present a date for that vehicle to you. I appreciate that, also. Thank you.
I've never seen you do anything other than being officially responsible along with the duties that you do for us. And it's a, that's a trust that you've built with us, and we appreciate that. Or with me, I appreciate that. And we, forward just to get those numbers and bring them back to us. And we'll advertise it at 60, and then most of these, those certainly be going down.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you, Council. I appreciate it. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other department heads here, please, to discuss their budget?
The one thing, when we go in.
Yep, right ahead.
Okay, so the budget meeting, we talked about my software that I have for our payroll and financial and tax software. Wow. We discussed it a little bit, and you guys have to see if the commissioners take out a seat. I went for them yesterday. I thought they were forever. Not do that. And if you want to, you can. But the other option was Q cap. And when I, again, when I said that you guys, the commissioners take out a seat, the commissioners said they'd rather just see a standard budget from County General, which I'm fine with too. I just wanted to, wanted to give you guys options since per statute it can come out of the Q cap development. But I will do, obviously, with you guys.
What was that?
Try to see if you, it's 100,000. That's why I was changing our property tax software. It was a little bit more than expensive annually, but it's definitely, it's much more software, and it was definitely a needed change.
So what's, how long will that last? How long can you use that software before it'll be updated? Yeah, exactly.
I, I don't foresee it. I, I mean, I don't, I don't.
Do you use the software you have now?
Well, it, we use it. I mean, we use it every day. It's going to be there for years.
How long have you had it?
Had it, oh, then the three had the financial. Then I think we switched over into 10, the financial software. And then obviously, we just converted the tax software beginning of this year.
So we're looking at $85,000, $9,000 a year. And is this a digital appropriation in 2021 or is this for 2022?
This is for 2022 budget.
And that was in your budget or you're adding that back in? Because it wasn't in the numbers you talked about because you were going to talk to the commissioner?
Yes, and I had had it split between mine and Q cap. And then I let you guys know that, but then I'm like, but I need your direction on where you really want it all to be paid out of. If you want it all in mine, it's really up to you. Obviously, it's really up to you guys. I just wanted to give you some options because it is a large sum of money, but we, it's a needed software. And we can't pay our bills. We can't pay our employees without it. I mean, we can't trade your property without it. You know, a big deal, so.
The one thing about taking it out of Q cap is that Q cap's going to get hit pretty hard here. Court hours going on. Now, you know, as a repairs, we've got jail, you know, or the, yeah.
Martial house.
Martial houses. Yeah. Teresa, do you, would you care to speak on the commissioner's tone on why you guys felt that should be coming out of County General?
Yeah, it starts with this. It's really the same thing. Rather than be at County General. The jail coming up, we're going to have a lot of that. That's what we need to know. I should talk about that more in my commissioner's report. So, see about what we're going to do.
I guess personally, I struggle with that large of a non-tangible expense coming out of Q cap. I realize it can't come out of there, but it's not where I would choose to.
The county could take half of that budget and the other half, too. So busy.
Yeah, we can split it however. We can put it all in mine. Again, I just wanted to give you guys the option because I know we're worried about County General. And, you know, want to keep an eye on it. And it was just one of those things where you could save us some money in County General. But again, it can, obviously, all come out of there as well.
Well, there's a capital expense, I would prefer was still worth it. It's probably, and have a lot of expenses because we have to get a fiscal thing that members of the county can actually see. And this feels more like an operating expense even though it is capital because of the time. So unfortunately, I would suggest that we take it all out of County General.
Can you share with us what our County General account is at right now? And what you expect to carry over to next year?
Unfortunately, I do not have the computer like I normally do in front of me in my lap, you know, my laptop. So I can definitely email you guys the cash balance and all information with it. I am currently working on budget numbers. They finally opened the forms on the Gateway, Gateway website. So that was just the other day they opened them. So I'm working on those numbers, trying to get revenue, trying to get our max levy from the state. So as soon as I get all those final numbers, and hopefully, I think our DLJ rep, that he's hoping that'll come out by July 15th, which is next Thursday, I will definitely email you guys all of the information so you have it. And then I will give you those forms I gave you last year. And again, I can provide you with that because it's a form available on the internet. So I'll be working hard on that today.
If, if we were to take out all of the County General, could you County handle that?
Oh, yeah, yeah, it can. It can.
Can I ask you a question? And it's hard to say. If this is a monitor's purchase, why isn't it coming out of the monitor's? But isn't it because of the dollar amount?
Well, it does, it does currently, it comes out of my budget. But it's utilized, telling why. So that's the only reason I was maybe asking if it could, again, come out or be split. Because.
But the purchase of each new job, right?
For all, that's why for all.
I'm trying to be fair to you. Yeah, I mean, again, it pays all the department's bills. I mean, this is how we do everything. The county, we're literally, we're not, I mean, you guys could, but it probably won't run very well without the county. So. Again, I can find it coming out of County General. I was just, again, presenting you guys with some options. And if you want that to be, to be that way, that's fine. So.
Mr. Chairman, let's advertise it that way. We can always change it up. Once you advertise it at 100,000. You're not County General. We can change. We can't go the other way.
No, right. But I'm not saying that. I mean, we're always very diligent on protecting County General. I think our County General should be about two and a half million about right now.
It's cash balance wise, I'll play out.
Okay.
Yeah.
I do have a, at least in the ballpark. So we have to be, it wasn't, that's just four years ago. That we were down to $800,000 in County General. So we're starting to sell that back up. Was, I know it might be a lazy thing, but maybe the most appropriate thing would be to take it out of County General and to still continue to be very diligent in making sure that we protect County General too. That's, that's my, I'd be in favor of that. Is that motion? Tim, is there any motion?
Oh. I, it's still in discussion.
Oh, what's it called? I thought.
Make a motion that the budget toward the lab software of $200,000, 2022, of the Commissioner.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Will there be further discussion on it? Hearing nothing, move to the roll call for a vote, please. Yes.
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 Okay, thank you.
Anybody here else can speak on their budget, please? Hearing nothing, then we'll go to Teresa for the commissioner's report.
Um, we should, first thing, obviously, we were downstairs with the meeting. The AP insurance group of 600,000, 700,000. For Canada, right, of the, posted online.
Yeah.
So Sweetwater has a part, committed $6,695. Obviously, we need it, so we can have it up there. There's what she showed. We went ahead and told Mark to go order it. I'm not sure if they have it.
It's being installed right now. Yeah, there's somebody upstairs installing.
Okay, so there's that.
Excuse me, is that a repair or a replacement?
It's a.
Replacement. Oh, replacements are basic work, that's it. With new fixer boards. The replacement repairs the problem. Thank you.
Yes, so there's that. So we would ask the SEC about a Q cap or County General. And if we all use. There's that.
Do you still have anything up in your budget to cover that?
Um, we can talk about our budgets specifically. Just when we all three talked about it, obviously, we had to make decisions. We had to order and they asked that I jump before you. So I don't know. This was just yesterday that this was presented as the thing that was right before the meeting.
I would like to see if the commissioners got money to pay for that. They got it in their budgets and wanted to pay for that. Come on, we'll not link them back.
Okay, I'll have them. They will do that on that. So, so that should be, we should be back on our normal meeting. That's, and then also, our last jail visit is this Friday, which you were all invited to, to any of these plans coming together. I mean, I think Joe's the only one who truly comes to visit. The large one. Okay, so if anybody wants to join, I can try. I have our table, which is about 8:30. Get back to Hamilton County Jail about 10:00. We've got an hour, hour and a half to this. It's probably something I need. We should be back by 2:00. It's late, but I can tell that's a, like, if you guys come to, please, see what we're looking at. And next week, we plan on, we plan on which our special friend is going to do the final line. Maybe they have offers on the side that we've been looking at. Please, please, show me for there. So, and then there's like a central occupation. It's very complicated to be everything that comes around. They were actually really, really cool. I don't know. I'd do something like that. But we do plan on moving on the jail very quickly if that's what they needed. We have issues in place every other day, at least every week over there. Issues going on. Obviously, the commissioners, because we're here. Where often than we'd like to be from inmates over there. So we should be quite a bit moving on that this year. Do you know we're almost finished with? Property purchase from Dun &amp; Armstrong over by Walmart in that area. So that's that.
Can we give us an update on that? We had talked about that the last meeting, and there were going to be some options that were discussed and trying to massage it a little bit to see how we could offset that additional 50,000. That didn't happen. I heard, weren't they going to close next couple of days on that property?
Yeah, we haven't. Matt is working on, on all details on that. That's the last one I heard, but we're very close.
And a deal before yesterday, they closed Dun &amp; Armstrong. And they want to do. It's month of 3/15. So your request was followed, just was not right. Good, that, it was discussed, but not into along with that.
Yeah, so I think that was appropriate to share, or not back to us. I appreciate you having that information. Teresa, are you putting together, on your visits, something that, some sort of a report that you could get to everyone here on what you found and, um, maybe you've taken or?
I mean, it's something you just need to come see. I mean, like I said, I'm allowed, I'm in jail. I'm in jail, so it's sort of get desperate to be experts on that.
You know, I toured the jail. What was the next year?
I was county.
And I think everyone should go see it because the way they have it set up, they have access to every one of these cells without the inmate even knowing they're doing it. It's really amazing how they have it set up. And to be able to utilize something like that would be awesome, actually. But you would, you'd really need to see it. You can really get tours and open your mind up. How the tower works, you can see everything from that tower. And I understand how, when Mark said they cut down staff in the new jail, you can totally visualize why that occurs. Very well. We're like. So when they talk about the expense for faceless, I don't know what you call it, inspection, now you're going to know what they're talking about. I hope everybody on the council can go visit the jail before we make any decisions. It's really important since we don't mess with love. Well, the design, like you said, I think.
That's one big thing that question is handled in that long term wise, which means that it's a salary. If we can cut out as many employees as possible, that kind of saves the county millions of dollars. Hope to be here.
So you're, you're, you're certainly not, oh, we start buying people off of. Are we saying this to Teresa?
Oh, it's in the point now, no. But I mean, I mean, you know, have our taxpayers pay for people that aren't needed. But if it's in the point now, we do, hopefully, we won't have to hire anymore, which would be a tax thing.
Yes, it's not, they're not saying we have to get rid of people. We should be able to do what we can.
Teresa, I want to add a good comment earlier here when you said back here thinking about the future people that already currently work for you, but you talked about, well, not right now. So that's not.
Not right now, but.
Yeah, you're going to cut people.
We're not saying we're cutting people. Mark, you know, Mark just said, you bring it up on the past meeting, where he said, when we were talking about the pension, he said, because I asked him how many people we need to hire for the jail, and he said we won't.
I privately come.
That's one of the.
But you're going to double, so you're going to have more responsibility. So I, I'd just be careful saying stuff, but.
Yeah, I'm getting that from that comment. I need to go back and watch.
That's, that's fine, but I'd be careful on that statement, just saying that. Well, I'm taking these people off now.
I'm taking these people off now, it's not, well, people, you obviously know that, but I think that's why.
Yeah, and my comment was directed at Teresa, because the comment was made that, or made that we won't need as many people, so I wanted to make sure that we weren't already talking about the fact we were going to make people off, I'm against that. I'm not advocating that, and I'll make it clear that I was not suggesting that, in this public area right here, it was really, it was really well.
That whole conversation was about how important it is to go see how jail life and how staff is, it's really important to see that.
James, have you been to one, just the time we're talking about? Look at your comments, that very, that was awful. Yeah, especially, to share with me, I would like to. Like I said, anybody able to write with me, will probably be here, like I said, about eight thirty, hopefully back at two o'clock. And you guys can ask engineers any questions, or may talk about cost savings, and all of the, the new things that they're doing in jail, yeah, eight hundred dollars, so. Does anybody have any?
Do you have anything else for us?
Um, yes, so I handed out a paper, this is what we, I have a copy, we'll grab that. So yesterday, you talked about the maybe, the R P B, and obviously, this is something that I've been working on. So the reengage, Dale and I, our P D C director, reengage the A P, so that was with four sponsors, I'm getting our county residents right for internet, and he came back with a vote for us, he said it's about eight point three million dollars. These numbers are obviously just an estimate, to get really, really, this means, you have that with engineers, make a look at that, George and I talked about that, and we can get some more specific numbers, right now, there, ready to, that's about two million dollars, in the county, these numbers, you're not specific, this is just for our county residents, so, and also, the R P B, we would like to see all of the lost revenue replayed before anything else is done with the fund. It sounds like March third is the date that we're allowing to go back to at this point, obviously, we're still waiting on more direction from the Treasury, however, that we're going through, what they put now, and talking to the facility, getting their guidance on that as well, so we don't, and do the lens of, and all of that, so, again, yes, this was presented yesterday, with the meeting.
Excuse me, Teresa.
Yeah.
Were the members of the council, or the county, notified?
Oh, everybody was. There was a meeting, Jan, that we had, specifically around.
As far as I know, yes.
And you weren't going into it? Okay. I was on the computer, I don't know who was. But I know we definitely, first to our report, it's just like the numbers, schedules, whatever it was, we had it yesterday, so. But, anybody have any questions?
I just want to make sure, because I'm not, I want to make sure, because I don't understand, the brown field, white field, at the top, does this have anything to do with this issue?
No, no, I'm sorry, before I have to, I have to break down there.
Okay.
Okay, I just, I just wanted to say, I did, I brought it up on my phone, and the people that were invited to the meeting, all the emails, was Kimmy, myself, John Barrett, Kay Gatton, Teresa, George, Chad, Jim, and Kim, are all on there, so I don't know if I just got thrown to your spam or something, Jim, sorry, but you, they, everyone is all on there, so I just wanted to make sure that.
You got my email yesterday?
Yep, I got your text, yep.
Text.
Yep, I love, no. Yep.
Teresa, anything else for us?
No, no, the jail, the, sorry, right now.
Okay, thank you. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes? I depend on after the various corrections statements that they will present to you. Call for motion, please.
Any motion, there's a, minutes as we're.
As presented. Secondly.
Oh, second.
Motion's second, through the discussion, carried on, we'll go to the votes, by roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes. I've seen it, it was not here.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Oderbach?
No.
Counselor Orner? Anything, help department, anything, you're sitting here looking at, it's like, come on, come on, call. I'm sorry, I didn't see on the agenda, I didn't know that you wanted to.
I don't think so, yeah. I'm not on the agenda, I'm just here for your service, COVID's pretty slow, physical ended, testing's way down, maybe have one, two people at the most a day, there's no more free testing, you know, but we can't, so go to Allen County, free testing, concerns about the Delta variant, I left that, move on where people, maybe I haven't had that, tested for it, they're not spreading, or symptoms, they're not more near death than anything else, so we are reducing the likelihood about most of the patients. Right now, we're looking at other grant opportunities coming in from us, P P E, storage, things like that, we don't anticipate there being a surge in the fall, from what I know about, most schools are not going to go back to pre-COVID business, that they will be asking for masks, or anything like that, for students. We are still having our clinics on Tuesdays through July and August, about thirty-seven spots per day, so we are still seeing people, it's about twenty people at me yesterday. Any questions?
Thank you. Nothing?
I have nothing.
And I have nothing, meaning this is true, I have the most military sign before you lay to it.